It is Monday, December 16. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ross, will you please call our roll?
Mr. O'Connor.
Present.
Pastor Moody.
Present.
Reverend Matthias.
Present.
Mr. LeGrand. Dr. Baker.
Here.
Ms. Slade.
Present.
Mr. Ross, present. Dr. Randles.
Present.
President Faub.
Here.
All accounted for.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some of.
Support? Support? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Next on our agenda are celebrations. I see some very academic-looking young men in front of me.
Madam President, members of the board, I'm going to ask Kurt Johnson and Mr. James Barrest to come up front, please.
Good evening. Good evening.
That sounds kind of funny.
Good evening.
Nope, something is wrong with that.
Don't sing.
I'll try to use my outdoor voice. Good evening. I'll sing on the next program. I'm excited to be here tonight, especially on the heels of our opening of our boys' basketball season, which was this past Friday evening, where we opened with Ottawa and Union, at Union High School, in our season opener with a sold-out crowd. Under Mr. Johnson's advisement, we had to stop selling tickets somewhere in the second quarter because we were at capacity, I think we were over capacity. But it was sort of a crowd. We thank the community, the board, and Mrs. Neal for supporting the Transformation Plan. That part was a component of the Transformation Plan, so we really are pleased at how the community came out and supported all the student athletes on that community-wide event. So, thank you. So, Dr. Faub, Mrs. Neal, and the rest of the board, we're here tonight to share with you a group of young men who actually were at the game Friday night, played in that game as well, and they're here for a special reason, a special acknowledgement in terms of what they have been doing at Ottawa Hills. Behind me, you have a group of high-achieving young men who maintain GPAs of 3.5 to 4.0 throughout the academic year while being student athletes.
Fantastic job.
And they had and they had an undefeated 19-0 season on top of that.
Right.
So, they were really great. And we're here because Mrs. Neal believes very strongly that exposure is a critical piece and a big piece of the educational process. And so, these young men were presented with an opportunity to be exposed to a museum of their choice. They chose one on the East Coast, and you'll hear a little more about that. And so, when that opportunity came about, it allowed me to structure a trip that would be unique in its origin, and you'll hear a little more about that. But I think these young men, as you see them, as we look at some of our data, and we want to know how can we impact African-American young males and Hispanic male, they may hold some of the answers to our questions. These young men, let's say they're at Ottawa Hills, they share the same classroom of students, walk the same hallways, eat the same lunch, breathe the same air, have some of the same challenges, and they have chosen deliberately to do what it is that they do. And so, some of the questions that we may have, want to ask, they may have the answer. So, it might do us well to talk to them and find out how it is that they persevere through what it is, the environments, and still become high-achieving. With no further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Barrest, to talk a little more about the Academic Upgrade Program and what it is, and who we have with us, and we'll show you some pictures.
The Academic Upgrade Program, is that coming across?
Yeah.
I'm getting an echo over here. It's a program that we started at the urging of Mr. Lewis and support of Mr. Lewis four years ago. And the reason that we got involved in the program of that nature was because, as a dean of students, which I was previously, I realized that a lot of kids, particularly a lot of our male students, they were ashamed to be smart. Some of them had 3.5s and 3.8s and 3.7s, and they walk around the halls and you would never know it. And one day, one weekend, I took the grade report home, and I went through the grade report, and I found that at least 35 kids qualified for the Honor Society. Why weren't they there was the question I got with the Honor Society supervisor at that time. She said they never fill out an application. And that led me, I talked with Mr. Lewis, and led me to start to call them in one by one. Why aren't you in Honor Society? You have a 3.7, and you've had a 3.7. Why aren't you in the Honor Society? And I get answers like, "Mr. B, I don't want to go out like that. I'm gonna get my grades, and I'm gonna go to college, I'm gonna do this, that, and the other, but I don't want to be looked upon as being smart." They had a negative concept of being smart. And so, at that particular time, again, I said, well, to myself, and again with Mr. Lewis's encouragement and urging, we need to do something about it. And we come up with that concept of academic upgrade. We took 25 kids, I got the 25 kids, and said, "If you can do this," and we only had it kicking for a semester, "if you can do this by the end of semester, get your grades up to here, maintain them, no disciplinary referrals, we'll do something nice for you at the end of the year." He's not here now, but Bennett Gay was also instrumental in working with that program. And that first year, we took 25 kids over to Chicago, over to the Great America. And it was kind of insignificant, we think, but it had a lasting effect. Kids came back, "What are we gonna do this year?" And gave us a chance to do some other things. And so, Academic Upgrade grew from that 25 to last year, we had 140 students that actively at some time or another participated in the program. This particular group here, Mr. Noble, myself, and again with the encouraging and pushing of Mr. Lewis, we said, "We need to do something with the ninth grade," because the problems, you're gonna solve problems, you gotta go to the root of the problem. We looked at, "What do we want to do? We want a program that's academically motivated. To get into the program, you gotta be academically motivated. Obviously, you gotta be socially well-adjusted in school." And thanks for Mr. Noble, we come up with the idea of young men destined for success. And these are, and we had to go through the books again. It wasn't a type of thing where you would come and apply. We had to spend hours and hours going through all the grades, all the citizenship grades and so forth. And we ended up with a group of young men that all had from 3.5s to 4.0 GPAs, never in any disciplinary-type problems. And we started meeting with them, and we thought it'd be best to try to run in lack of fraternity in college to get them involved. And Mr. Noble did most of that, and we came up with a group of young men that they are their brother's keeper. They look out for each other, and they do those things that are necessary to pursue their academic goals and their social goals, and to make Ottawa Hills a better place. That's basically the Academic Upgrade. Any student can join the Academic Upgrade Program. We have a few basic rules. You can get in the program with a 1.5, but when a new marking period come around, you better be at a 1.6. The idea is you must improve every marking period. And we feel that if you get on the path of improving, the sky's the limit, you'll continue to improve. And so far, that has worked like that, so far. Mr. Noble did the hands-on with these young men here, and we selected them, and they opted to be a part of the program. Again, it's a program you don't join, you're selected. And the selection is based upon behavior, leadership, and also your grades. We look for high academic standards. I would like to say that this group here, this past, oh, a month ago, five of the seven were inducted into the National Honor Society.
That's fantastic. Mr. Noble?
Before you do that, Mr. Noble, is there something you want to share about what you've done with these students briefly? Thank you.
Well, this came about, when I got to Ottawa Hills, I always think about, if you want to change something, you need to change the culture. And what I did when these guys came in, I charged not only these guys, but I charged a group of freshmen to be 4.0 students. And these were the students who ranged from a 3.5 to 4.0. So, what I did was all hands-on. I charged them, I created a mission, I created a creed with them, I programmed with them, and I make them hold themselves to high standards. I'm very hard on them. I don't like the, as they say, the piece-of-party syndrome. Their perks are being honor roll students, being in the Academic Hall of Fame, and being in the National Honor Society. Those are their perks. And I never promised them anything but being high-achieving students. That's my promise to them. And they've lived up to it. And I'm very strict and stern with them, and they follow it, and they do everything that I ask of them, and I appreciate it, because I'm not an easy person to please. They've done it, and I appreciate it, so.
I had to beg him to change just a little bit for them.
You softy.
I did.
Their trip involves visiting a museum on the East Coast, the street of Massachusetts, that you'll get to see a couple photographs, and they journey on their way to that.
Of course.
Thank you for that support. I love these young men, as they continue to do bigger and better things with their work.
Awesome.
No, thanks for your work, man. All you is.
Very impressive. Good job.
Good job.
Very nice.
He has a little presentation he'd like to make.
They work so hard.
Hi, my name is Roulan Chambers, current Sergeant of Arms of Young Men Destined for Success. On behalf of Young Men Destined for Success, we'd like to present you with a certificate of appreciation for all your support and enlightening. Thanks to the trip, the enlightening trip.
You are so welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to run back. That's Tony's.
That's all right.
You know where to find us.
That's all right. Come and shake our hand.
You know where to find us.
Best possible. You are so welcome. Good job. Thank you, Mr. Noble, so much. Nice, thank you. Retired.
Next, I would like to ask Mickey to come forward. We have a wonderful surprise for Grand Rapids Public Schools, and it truly is my pleasure to introduce.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Neal, Madam President, members of the board. Very happy to be with you this evening to celebrate a very prestigious accomplishment for one of our teachers. To achieve National Board certification, a teacher must demonstrate advanced teaching knowledge, skills, and practices. Completion of the certification signifies that a teacher has both developed and demonstrated the skills required of an accomplished educational professional. I'm honored to present to you today our newest and currently only National Board certified teacher.
Come on up, Ray. All right.
Ms. Ray Wood has been with the district since 2007 as an elementary teacher, and she's currently teaching our fourth graders over at Sibley Elementary. And she is now nationally board certified in early and middle childhood literacy, reading, and language arts. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Wood.
I just want you to know, this is such a rare occasion that a district is able to present someone like this. This is a $5,000 check for your accomplishments, and as soon as Ray sent the information to me last week, or week before last, I wanted to get her the check right away, because you've worked so very hard to do this. And so, it is my honor to give you this check tonight. And thank you for all that you are doing for Grand Rapids Public Schools' children. Amazing that you would go back to school to do that for our kids. Love it. Thank you. That is just awesome. And I truly want to thank GREA, because it's a part of the contract that the teachers that become nationally certified, that they would get $5,000. And how wonderful to encourage people to become the best that you can be. I think it's awesome, just really proud. And then I would ask Rick Noel to come up front. Our friends are here.
Superintendent Neal, President Faub, board members, it's a pleasure for me to be here tonight, because even though it's 2013, and we hear constantly about technology and putting things in students' hands that are technology-related, tonight, we're gonna talk about the ultimate in a handheld device, which is a dictionary. To my right, to my right, I have Katie Orent, who is the president of the Grand Rapids Golden K. Kuanis Club. And to her right, Patrick Newcomb, who is the president of the Grand Rapids North Kuanis. And they're gonna talk a little bit tonight about the dictionary program for our third grade students in Grand Rapids. And behind them, Peter Satterthwaite, who is being shy this evening, which is very unlikely, Peter, so we'll give him his moment. But I give you Katie.
Superintendent Neal and the board, it's so nice to see you again.
Nice to see you as well.
It's been wonderful. She's been to both of our clubs to talk about what's going on in the school system, so it's just nice to see you again and greet you. It's just our privilege and just wonderful that we can present the third graders in the public schools with these dictionaries. When I went to Vandenberg School this year, it was my first opportunity to do this, and I saw the little third graders, and I said, "Do you see the picture of the world on here?" And they said, "Yes." I said, "It's like the window to the world for you when you hold this book in your hand." One little boy said to me, "Do I get to keep it?" And I said, "Yes, it's yours." And we realize that for some of these children, it's the first book that they'll ever own, or maybe the only book they'll ever own, and it's got everything in it. Kuanis is, our motto is, serving the children of the world, and our theme is young children, priority one. So, we are all about serving children. So, raising money for this is easy, and providing it for the children is easy. Patrick, what would you like to say about the books?
Well, first of all, I'm humbled to be here, and I want to thank Superintendent Neal for joining us a couple of weeks ago. And as important as this is, it hardly, you know, we have a huge act to follow, and we're not gonna try, but just want you to know that this is part of a tradition, and we're proud to continue. And how many of you already have yours from years past? One of the things I'm going to tell you is that Peter's gonna give up his shyness and collect those. You don't need to. We'll redistribute. And I liked the idea of the handheld device. But thanks so much for having us, and we're very pleased to make this small contribution to the kids.
It's wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for your service.
I did, thank you.
He's halfway through his.
Thank you so very much.
Nice to see you as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones, we are so pleased to have you up here with us, and it is your moment in the agenda if you have a report to share with us.
For the most part, Invention Central is going well. We love our class, classes are going fine and smoothly. Some people have concerns, or we'll like have basically a backup, somebody in that backstand. Some people want, like, inner mirrors, little clubs. Most of us are interested in hip-hop, some type of hip-hop club or media. Something that comes to mind is, I know you have a tri, I don't know how to say it, tripod survey?
Tripod.
Tripod survey, which I would like to know more about it, to get more students to take it and basically have an understanding, instead of just getting in, receiving, and just turning in. The food there is great, no complaints. I gotta eat, I'm a big guy.
Sounds like a high school student.
Yeah, I'm a big guy. And so, yeah, it's running smoothly, we just have a little concerns and little things we would like to fit in, as like the inner mirrors in hip-hop clubs, and I would like to know more about the tripod survey.
Feedback about the tripod survey, I think is especially good. Makes sense, where you have more context on why you're doing it and taking it. Thank you. Mr. Ross, do we have public comment for agenda items?
We have none.
Great, thank you. Do we have a secretary's report, Mr. Ross?
The only thing that's come across is an
The only thing that's come across is an invitation to the Grab's Urban League, Dr. Martin Luther King Corporate Breakfast, to all the board members. That is on Monday, January 20th at 7:30 a.m. at the Steelcase Town Hall. If anyone wants to attend, please contact Ms. Anderson in the superintendent's office, the RSVP, by the 10th of January, if you could.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Superintendent's report.
I would like to ask Dr. Mira Gunnel to come up front, please, to introduce our newest member of our team from C.A. Frost, and after that, then I would ask John to come up, and John's going to do two things.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Superintendent Neal, President FOB, it is with great pleasure and delight that I'm here tonight to introduce you to our new team member, and his name is Greg Ramey. Mr. Ramey is the new principal at C.A. Frost Environmental Science Academy, and he comes with a lot of experience, elementary, secondary, teacher, principal, coach, down from Kentucky and Atlanta, so please join me in welcoming him. We are delighted to have him join our team. Greg has a few comments because he wants us to get to know him better.
This won't take long, it's, I tested it at home, it took me about 45 minutes. But I did write a few things down, and I'll begin by saying, "Good evening, my name is Greg Ramey, principal of Frost Environmental Science Academy, and I love my job, I truly do, and I am grateful to be here." I'm really here tonight to simply introduce myself and thank Superintendent Neal, members of the board, for this opportunity to serve as principal. I have to say, in the short time I've been here, I've really been inspired by the passion of this district, really, and my school team, for the success of our students, and about leading them as we quickly progress towards achieving the goals of the second phase of our district transformation plan. And I mean this, I really welcome any, any chance to work with you, Superintendent Neal, and the board with regards to success of our district, and I just think we can make our district the best in the state, I really believe that, I've been in my sheriff's school systems too, and it's my expectation that Frost will be one of the highest performing schools in the state, and I don't say this lightly, but I see the resources that we have here, and I know what's available, and I know we have the tools to get there, and that's my expectation. I did not come out of retirement from Kentucky to come just to be principal somewhere else. I came here because I have a passion to serve, and I expect us to be high performing. So in closing, really, I'm grateful for this opportunity to serve as leader of my school and district, and wish to thank you for your support towards our vision at Frost Environmental Science Academy, which is provoking, promoting environmental stewardship, sustainability, and academic achievement through science-based education and learning. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Legislative update first. We were a little nervous in the waning days of the legislative session, but we're pleased, I'm pleased to report that the three pieces of legislation, the EAA codification, the A to F grading system, which is a lot more than that, it's not just a simple A through F grading, there's, it's, the details are all in the bill. And then the third one, of course, was the third grade reading mandate. Those have all been put on pause until after the break, they are not dead, they are simply, were not completed during the session, I'm happy to answer any questions about the details, but I know we've provided an update as well, so that's where we're at. Rusty and I are already starting to have conversations about appropriations, the governor's office and others have reached out, so not only will we have policy issues coming right after the first of the year on likely all three of these pieces of legislation, but appropriations is going to kick in pretty quick as well, so we'll keep you posted. Second issue was just to reiterate that the press release and the communication about Superintendent Neal's listening tour, I want to remind it, and we're going back out, the listening tour never really stopped, this is just the more formal aspect with the community meetings, those dates, again, what we're going to focus on, what's working, what's not working, what are barriers to success, and what are ideas or innovation solutions that individuals have. So the dates coming up, on January 14th at Gerald R. Ford Academic Center, January 16th at Burton Elementary Middle School, January 21st at Harrison Park School, January 23rd at City High Middle School, and February 4th at Innovation Central High. From 4:30 to 5:30 are staff meetings, and then the community meetings are from 6 until 7, or until we finish up taking questions and answering any concerns.
Thank you, John, thank you for all your leadership and hard work last past week in Lansing. I know we've talked about reconvening and revisiting our legislative platform to perhaps change and expand some of the current language, and also anticipate some new things that are coming down the pike, so any questions for John?
Yeah, I just, I'm not a questioner, comment, but in terms of, like, EAA, public, all three of those, at some level, might seem good to the general public, you know, you know, third grade reading is important, so we got to make sure that kids have it, or grading system, or even the expansion of EAA, some people thought, but it's, how do we get the public behind and understanding of the implications on that for public school systems in general, and also long-term? So, and I'm not, I guess I'm not asking you to answer that question now, but it just seems like a lot of people were rallied around, I mean, there's an education lobby that was rallied around, but yet, the general public, you know, how do we actually respond to this? Because there would have been huge implications had these things gone through last week, and then there, since they still potentially can, so, anyway, just my thought, I mean, it just seemed like it was, stakes were really high, you know, so.
High stakes, too much, too fast. We've talked a lot about this, and when we had our legislative event, you know, our message was, let the dust settle. You've done a lot of reform, a lot has been pushed through in the last couple of years, the dust needs to be settled, that's just like transformation plan, we went big, we said we were going to go big so we can then stop and stabilize, and let's see what works, and I think that was the concern, is how quickly so much of that moved, with not a whole lot of input and understanding as to the implications. The good news is it's paused, we've been in communication with the House and Senate delegation, we're going to meet with some over break and into the early parts of January, and try to show them how all these pieces and parts should not be happening in silos, that the student growth model that's mandated by state law that's coming down the pipe, those are things, and the teacher effectiveness, and those, we need to lead with that, because that's what should dictate and derive everything, as opposed to these state mandates that may not be in the best interest of children.
I was just going to say, you might want to elaborate on the growth model, and how changing our measurement for failing schools and everything, how that relates to all this legislation, and the new coalition, you know, forming around that.
Very rarely will I be quoting Mackinac Center, but that is in one example, recently the Mackinac Center did an analysis of the state's top to bottom ranking system, and they found that it was greatly flawed, and that it is inherently stacked against high poverty, high needs districts. Well, there are many models across the state where, and they don't have to even account for poverty or other factors, if they simply account for the student growth over a period of time, it gives a much more fair, accurate, balanced way to measure, and so, as the state had done with the tenure reform, it also mandated that the legislature would, would take into account a new student growth model, we are at the forefront of that, we have a meeting even this Thursday where we're, groups coming in from, from out of town, they have one model, we're not endorsing this model, but it's one example of a student growth model that we know is more fair and balanced and effective, coming from a state like Tennessee where they've had, they're one of the models, so why not learn from best practices and, and use that to inform decision-making? And how do we bring our lawmakers along so that they're getting more rich in-depth analysis and not just talking points from their caucus?
Any other questions for John at this time? Thanks.
Thank you.
We have no action items, so we have, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Tell it out.
Support for that?
Support. Second.
Call the vote, Mr. Ross.
Who made the motion, please?
John made the motion, and Pastor Moody supporting.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Pastor Moody.
Yes.
Reverend Matthias.
Yes.
Mr. LaGrand. Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes, Dr. Randles.
Yes.
President FOB.
Yes.
Consent agenda passes 9-0.
Next on the agenda is a discussion item regarding the January calendar. We are still trying to adjust to this mid-year shift in, in officers and appointments to committees, and Mr. Baker, Dr. Baker brought to my attention, since he is leading the Achievement Committee, the need to maintain for the next month, at least the date for that committee, and perhaps our work session, so rather than just doing it, I just wanted to bring that, if that was acceptable to the board, we would do that, and after, in January at that point, we will set the calendar for the rest of the year and the appointments. Seeing nods all around, go ahead and do that, thank you. Public comment for non-agenda items?
I have none.
Superintendent's comments.
First, I would like to thank Coit, Ms. Deborah Perry, and Citi, Mrs. Jewell, for performing in the lobby for the first 30 minutes, and I definitely want to thank an arts person, I always want to call you new, Maggie, but you've been here now for about six months, but Maggie, for putting that together, it's just a great opportunity for us to hear our students. And then the last comment that I have, as I was looking out here, I see my grandson, CJ, who's trying to go down under the seat right now, so I want to say hi to CJ, I kept, I don't have glasses on, I kept thinking, I think that's my grandson back there, but CJ is here with me, so.
He is thrilled that you pointed it out.
He's getting shorter.
Board member comments, Reverend Matthias.
It's so good to see, and to hear it out loud, that it's okay to be smart, and it's so difficult sometimes, you know, in our context, so, so it's nice to see these young men, and would love to see young women, you know, in those honor societies. The other comment is that I was really privileged today to be part of the clergy council that's beginning, that's really promoting and gathering clergy to support our public schools from the context of the community, so it's really exciting to be part of that, and also to be able to have them have information about what's going on within our schools, of which their parishioners are being affected, so for them to get that information and then begin to partner with the public schools, and begin to say, "What can we do from our end?", it was really exciting to see that feedback from them as well, so, thank you.
Mr. LaGrand. Dr. Randles?
I just wanted to thank Ms. Stephanie Painter for taking me around today, I had a great opportunity to go visit some of the health centers, and hear a lot about all the great collaboration that the district's doing, and so many people are supporting Spectrum Cherry Street, it's not an endorsement, even though I work for them, and how much that everyone's focused on achievement, one of the school nurses brought up, we're looking at kids who are suspended, and bringing them into the health center, and seeing how we can help them with any issues, so it's really, it's really fabulous, the great collaboration, so thank you very much, and it was great.
Mr. O'Connor, Ms. Slade.
I just want to welcome a new principal, you're joining a group of really fine principals, so welcome.
Mr. Ross?
To want to welcome Mr. Rainey, big shoes to fill over at C.A. Frost, but really thank you for coming on board. I also want to thank Mr. Lewis in the back for, to support, to really establish this sort of core group of leadership, I suppose, within your building, and I don't know how I can help or add to that, but I would love for you to forward the message to those men if they would like a lunch or a breakfast, so we can talk about how to really, you know, make this thing contagious, they have an ally on the board to totally do that, and I can make myself available at their schedule, so please pass that to them. And I guess in regards to that whole, I know I missed a conversation last week about the nine of us getting into schools a bit, and I definitely would, you know, like to, you know, kick my colleagues in the tail a little bit to, to get out and do that, I think, you know, there's, you really, in anything, you know, you learn by experiencing and seeing it, you know, so, you know, I think that it's an important thing to do, I guess, I just, you know, really, 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 really important thing to do. And I guess in regards to that too, to my brother to my left, you probably, I'm probably the only hip-hop head on this board, so if you guys, you know, want to get something going. There's a difference between liking and being a head. So, you know, so, so with that, you know, you have an ally in that regard too, because I think there are some, some bridges that can be built between young and old, smart, not so smart, and everything else really with this, with this avenue, so I definitely would be on board on supporting that, and maybe even using some of the resources that CC, the studio we have right up the road from you, you know, and see what comes from it, so, so let's talk about that for sure. Other than that, I have nothing else to say.
Dr. Baker?
Well, when I was on, in a high school just recently, since I got kicked in the butt by my colleague here, Central High School, I just want to say, I was going to say this even without the prodding of, we're not here, but very impressed with what's happening at Central, it's good to hear you talking, you know, if some extra clubs is the, is the only thing that we got to work on there, it sounds really good, and I really impressed with the leadership there, and this happening with the parent engagement and collaboration, so I see at least one of the people connected to that. So, the other thing, Achievement Committee last week discussed the process for priority schools and how we're working with it, and as a board, we decided that we should have a discussion in more detail about, you know, what's happened, the way that process is, and so we'll, we'll do that at the January meeting, so, the January work session, I should say. Thanks for the candy, whoever's responsible for it, really appreciate it, and, you know, it's kind of interesting, all this stuff that, you know, part of why I feel so strongly about what was happening last week in the legislature is that, you know, despite the challenges in public education now, when people ask me how we're doing at Grand Rapids Public Schools, you know, you know, I just smile and say that, you know, things are really going well, despite, you know, again, the challenges happening at the state and nationally, et cetera, but feels really good to be on this board and working people, so, anyway, that's, that's what I got to say, end of the year, so.
Mr. Moody?
Ditto.
I feel about the same, wonderful comments with the colleagues, I want to thank all the students and all the staff and all the parents for all of their hard work and dedication this semester, and have a very safe, joyous holiday. Being adjourned.